Here.
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 Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to approve. Second?
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
What about the input? This is time, place, for discussion items not on the agenda with a timeline of three minutes each.
I have one question.
Good.
What is that on the screen up there? Shows the first.
Yeah, it shows if somebody wants to come in.
Okay, that's it?
Yeah.
So many. And so does that mean nobody?
There's nobody there, no.
I think we invested in a lot of the meetings. We will in the winter. We will the next time we make a mat.
Yeah.
They're all a partner.
They probably really are.
Discussion possible action concerning annual wage increase of full-time employees who were recently here twenty-four. So this was sent to you. We have the union contract that is two and a half percent increase this year. Guaranteed by the agreement. I went back through, it looks like in the past, they've done their raise straight across the board for the cost of living. I talked to John and Stephanie. Stephanie had said they've done three percent over the last several years, so. I guess whatever you had them up to do.
Well, I told Brandon that Connie usually came to us with a recommendation for her people and then Rick had came to us with a recommendation for his people. And that's just usually what it ended up being. But we did just give everybody raises.
Did you give my, I put a little synopsis in there, just how we started doing the merit performance reviews and the performance raises during their evaluation period. So I think the two and a half to three is a fair cost of living for what everybody would get in July, just for the, remember this goes to the starting wage is what we talked about when we created that wage scale, that would apply to this as well.
So here's the only thing that I would say, in the past, we'd give them a three percent raise, but that was the only raise they got throughout the year. Now, they potentially, based on their performance, could get two raises. They're gonna get the guaranteed, plus their performance could give them another one. So I don't care what you guys decide, but I mean, I think it would be okay to just do the two and a half, based on the fact that they now have an opportunity to earn another raise.
Motion?
I think if we had three percent though, that would help us catch up, be more competitive with other communities.
And I agree with that too, and I will truly do see it both ways.
So I'm sure whatever you guys want to do.
We are behind, I don't know if that extra, you know, half percent or four percent.
It'd be a half percent.
And it's.
It'd be a half percent.
You guys can do whatever you want.
But I also think, I think merit makes a. I think merit speaks louder sometimes, as far as if they want a bigger raise, they have to work for it too. I mean, that's any job that you have and you get a raise, it's based on, sometimes it's based on all merit, it's not the cost of living. So we could sit here and just hand them cash fist over fist if we wanted to, or we could expect them to, I mean, they already do, everybody does a great job, don't get me wrong, and I'm not, I'm not sitting here, I'm just playing devil's advocate, that do we want to just hand them something, or do we want them to work maybe a little bit harder to get a bigger raise?
Well, I think to Brandon, I think when we, I don't know, you guys tell me if this is what you think, when we started talking about these two raises, one of them was literally a cost of living raise, and then the other one was the merit raise. Now, the merit raise, well, either one of them could be whatever you guys want it to be. This raise, you could, what did you say that the cost of living average is?
Well, it got skyrocketed this last year, but you know, you just got to look at it like, this one to me is to keep everybody in check with, you know, not the one thing that we did to raise, but we will scale on all that. However, you know, it was the go-to share at two and a half percent. I mean, we're close, it's not, you're not talking a whole lot of money to two and a half to three, so I think you're still within check at either one of those, and that's why I put in there. I would not go with three based on how we're doing things now, because like you said, now, I think you, you know, gives them an incentive to do good work to, you know.
And I mean, like, some people got pretty decent sized raises this last round.
It's ten cents a half percent, twenty dollars, so I'll move, and we'll see where it goes to approve three percent.
Motion three percent, or second? Second? Motion dyes, go ahead with the motion.
I'll make a motion to go at two and a half percent.
Motion two and a half percent.
I'll second that.
Second, Sarah.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to stay.
Is that across the board?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance oh forward twenty twenty-one, chapter seventy-eight, gone parts. So just need a motion, a second, if there's no questions or concerns, nothing's changed.
Motion to approve, second reading.
Motion to a second. Sarah.
Aye.
Aye.
Stephanie.
Aye.
Aye.
Second reading of ordinance oh five, twenty twenty-one, increasing water rates. This is the same as before, nothing's changed. This is what Maggie's recommendation at Spirit Financial. We hope to approve, motion to a second.
Second?
Aye.
Stephanie.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Second reading of ordinance oh six, twenty twenty-one, increasing sewer rates. Same with the water, nothing's changed.
Motion to approve, second reading.
Second.
Motion second. Sarah.
Aye.
Aye.
Stephanie.
Aye.
Aye.
Second reading of ordinance oh seven, twenty twenty-one, and let's go. Same with that, you guys approved that, the last meeting, nothing's changed on that.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion second.
Aye.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
So public hearing, reference status of funded activities for C D V G program for June twenty-eighth. So I met with Mark Culver from E C cog, I sent the emails to you, he actually wanted it for the fourteenth, so I said we'd have to motion to have that, so he's good with the twenty-eighth, and you saw his email in there that said he's good with that, so.
Motion to set the public hearing for June twenty-eighth.
Motion to a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Prohibition twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, very part of members and afford adjustment members. Looks like Sam Bennett. Matthew Knuckles. And then Connie for the board adjustment, that's the vacant seat that I believe Jason Blakes went to plan and zoning, and so that created this vacancy.
Motion to approve the appointments.
Motion to a second. Sarah.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Stephanie.
Aye.
Aye.
Correspondence? Nothing.
Geez.
Been running through this meeting. Need to report for you this time?
Dave is not on.
Nope.
Thought he was gonna be. I know that he's still working through the Highway thirty resurfacing, he's met with Pelling. He's going to reach out to attorney to see if they can do a change order on the bid, or they have to rebid it, since it's a substantial amount, to try and split it out a little bit, so. And I will say that Dave and I have also been working with the Highway thirty bypass annexation, you know, there's a recommendation to, for us to look into that. So the state of Iowa, you got an email back, a hundred and forty-three acres is what they own out there, I believe, all but twenty-two of that is going to into urban, or I'm sorry, wooded mitigation. So for all the trees that they took out and they put the bypass in, they're planting trees in a hundred and twenty-two acres of that area that they own. So it can't be developed. In time, they could, they usually send it over to the county for, like, they could add trails or do something like that, and, but then they'd have to maintain it. So they said they could look into giving it to the city of Lisbon, but it'd be a trail that we'd have to maintain and so forth. So it looks like right now, there's approximately twenty-two acres that would be developed down that way. I don't know exactly.
No idea.
The weeds of where that's at. But then you'd have to go through that process of the former owner gets it, I believe, and then the next is adjacent owners have the right to it, and so it does sound like there's some, at least some adjacent owners that are interested in some of the property down there, I don't know how much, or again, I don't know where that twenty-two acres is. I did find a thirteen acre patch and a nine acre patch that they own, that's twenty-two, so I don't know if that's, that's what they're thinking, but we're still working on that, but I just wanted to give you just a little update on that, so.
Thank you, Brandon.
Anything else from city engineer report? I don't. Do you have anything from public work report? I do. So we're having some issues down at sewer plant this weekend with the spiral screen. I know that was a topic that was brought up during budget talks. Travis did look into it, but there's a delay in getting one, so just as an FYI, we're gonna be purchasing that as soon as we can. The paint sprayer, this was another item that was on the budget request, was to buy the new mark, so they can do the markings. Is that something, since it was on the budget report, do you want us to get bids and bring back to you, or is that something that you want us to purchase? I would assume you want some bids to decide what you wanted, how expensive it is? Uh, it's pricey, I don't, I don't have.
Is it over five thousand dollars?
Wow. If we went to it would be.
Then yes, it's going to be a hassle.
Okay. There's a eve on the bike trail, I don't know if you saw that, right across from the care facility, so they're gonna be working on that this week. There's also a sinkhole in Little Lane that's been there for a little while, we haven't marked, they're also gonna work on that this week, hopefully that's finished up. Dave talked last week about how with the water project, if you remember, some of the supplies are on back order, and it's gonna take a little while to get those in. Travis feels that we need to look into chipping and dipping in some of the areas, so Travis and I are gonna go drive around, I believe it's tomorrow, to check on the areas where we're doing the water mitigation, to see what we need to do to get those through this summer, there's some boil spots that need filled. And then also, outside of the project, West South Street at Franklin Cemetery Road, and then Grant Avenue will also need done, again, those are outside of the project, and we'll get some bids for those. I think that is, oh, the chippers in, I don't know if you guys have seen it. It's in use, there's numerous safety features, to the point where they thought it was broken,
So I can see we did a lot of training on it before we took it out and tried to start these.
So they were able, they were able to get through that, but Travis, he said that he's very impressed with it, and it's, it accepts very large limbs and logs, and it's, it's a great purchase, so kudos to you guys for, for doing that. Uh, I think that's it.
Well, for clarification, we aren't changing the fact that you need to only have certain size of pieces out there and.
No, what, what this is gonna help with if, I'm not even saying.
Oh, I know, I just.
If we have some, some issues in the future, we'll be able to handle a lot more than we could last time, so.
We're still restricted.
Yes.
It's gotta be what two million left.
Correct.
More.
Yep. Yes. First right there.
Who is it? I don't really know anything. We got intro TV on Coach Pitch going on, we got two weeks left, and then I know a lot of people want rain, but I'm pretty, I'm good for right now, so.
Take your sunglasses off on Friday when I.
My tractor's in, they're just waiting on a couple of things to be ordered along with it, so.
Make sure there's no safety features that you. Like the YouTube video or something?
Yeah.
I mean, if, in all seriousness though, if you want them to go out there and go over everything.
Yeah, well, I probably will do that either way, so.
They should be able to do that.
Drayton, I have a question for you. Has the board talked about any, doing any fundraising?
We are, we are talking about that, for the sports kind of, we talked about that at our last meeting, it's gonna be on our agenda for our next meeting, so.
Perfect.
When is your next meeting?
It's gonna be the twenty, it'll be next Monday.
Twenty second?
Or no, I'm sorry, it'll be the last Monday this month.
Twenty eight. And what's, uh, seven?
Thirty-seven, yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
Please, perfect.
Be on the sides, you're in, just cover your, where that.
Yeah, for a few people.
Hearing a few grumblings on that, but people getting used to it and adjusted, so we'll give it some time.
I've explained reasonings behind it to a few people, and they completely understand after you tell them like, why, like, they get it, they understand.
Also on that note, we are gonna add two more in the area of between the school and Gillette Lane, just because there's a large gap in between there, so, but we're not gonna do it until the thirty gets redone, so we're not taking it out.
That makes sense.
Just so people know.
You know, I know that we've talked about this a lot, and I think there's a plan with thirty thing, but you know that street down, you know, Alexander to the park, my street to the park? It's a little bit of a nightmare, because it's getting so much traffic now, and what is hap, what has happened a couple of times is I've literally almost gotten hit, because if you're coming in that way, if you're coming in behind that house, and somebody else is coming down this way, well inevitably, if there's something going on over here, they're not paying attention, they're looking over at the park, and you're coming this way and they're coming in, I don't know what we could do over there to make that any better.
Well.
But that road gets a ton of traffic now.
I know that there's, I think there's two posts with the gate, up top two, or maybe there you.
At the end down by the thing.
I know there's one at the end, but there's something up top.
Or not though.
I think so, no.
Okay. So the plan was, as part of that bid with Highway thirty, they were gonna do millings all in there, spray it down, roll it. I can, I can look to see about lighting, I just don't know, because you're, it's an easement, so you'd be on somebody's property, and I think we're.
Yeah, it's not a legal street, I, I.
To drive, really.
It really created a monster on my pass, because it's there, people are using it, and they're, I mean, they don't, I'm gonna, I'm here to tell you, they can go from zero to sixty on Alexander Avenue like that, from one end to the other, I mean, it, there's some traffic over there.
What, I mean, I don't know that this will help much, but you know, if we could, hopefully the cars that are headed to two thirty, if they turn at the campground, I know that you're talking probably up in the, you're probably talking right towards South Street, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if we can fix that, but at least maybe if you added where the traffic could somehow maneuver around differently, but.
I was trying to think, and there's probably no way to do it, if you could make it a one-way, like a circle or whatever, so that they couldn't turn there to go out, but I don't know.
Make a big roundabout.
Yeah, I don't know if you could do that.
The problem's gonna be, I think you could, but when bounty field's in play, you got so many people coming in, and they're from out of town.
Well, and they gotta come out too, but.
And you know, you start marking like a street, and you know, it's not a street.
No. Well, coming.
Coming out there is.
I'm trying to think. Yeah, coming from the.
Coming from the softball there, and there is, but there's.
And coming from our house, but not on South Street. Yeah, I don't know, it's just something maybe for somebody to look at somewhere. I don't have the answer for it, I just see the problem.
Maybe, maybe the, maybe the easement's bigger there or something, I'll, I can look at it. Can we stop, I'm gonna keep asking questions. Doug, were you done?
I'm good. As long as you're good.
Um, I have a question for you, Doug. Um, how is the golf tournament coming along for the K nine?
We are finding a lot, getting things wrapped up hopefully, and coordinated through, and.
Awesome.
Excited to have it rolling, so.
Good.
I think we're.
I talked to Steve Mole the other night.
We're still looking for some teams, I know there's ten teams open yet, but we also have a lot of the dump rusher to show up, and then repeaters and stuff like that too.
Yeah. Exactly, that's something that we could put on our Facebook page too, just to throw, so, throw some things on there, so maybe.
They've been good about sharing it too.
Yeah, they have been, yeah.
So it's been awesome.
Is that the only fundraiser for the K nine?
It's the only one, we tried to do it annually, and just leave it at the one fundraiser for that.
But if somebody wanted to donate to the K nine, they could just always go over to City Hall and donate it again.
You bet. Absolutely.
I just asked a question just to make you mad, because I know you want to. You just gave me that look like, are you done yet? Look at me.
Where are she's?
Um, I'm not sure.
I'll make up for it again, Marjorie.
I'm crossing things off off. Uh, nothing.
City engineers, or city administrators. The dugout concession stand are completed over at the park, they did build the tent, I think I mentioned that before, for the roof, instead of the shingles, so it was a cheaper, cheaper option. The cameras downtown are up and running, and the one at the busyville, which is still downtown, but, and the city hall. They ran into some issues over at the park with run the line, so that, I didn't get an update, but should be done by the end of the week, so I was able to log in, I got a login for Doug as well. Pretty nice, I think we're gonna add one more wide view on the history center, just because each camera, you can't really get the whole intersection, so he's gonna put a fixed one there just for the intersection, but they work really good. I can, you can maneuver in on the zoom in, zoom out, you can get right in on, do a license plate if need be, so it's a pretty, pretty nice system, so.
When will they be at the park, do you have any idea?
I'm hoping by the end of the week.
Because the park has been exceptionally busy.
Yes.
And with the Mount Vernon pool being shut down, it's, this week's been a lot, I mean, there's been a ton of people there.
Yeah. Which will lead me to the next thing, I think it's great to see the splash pad full. Today, I think there was four vans there from the daycare in Solon, they had kind of taken over the pavilion with lunch pails and all kinds of stuff, so me personally, I think it's good that other people are coming to Lisbon, checking us out, especially, you know, I really concerned with the bypass, I think obviously this is the word spread about our splash pad, and kudos to everybody that was part of that, do that. We are working on getting a picture, Drayton took something the other day, just to post from a distance, to show them that the people, how many people are there, and posting it on Facebook, so.
Um, I do believe we have a kid here in town who does like aerial photos, I don't know what he charges, but you might check with him and see if he can do something like that and get a quick, like on a day when there's a ton of people there, I'm sure it's probably not that expensive, so.
Oh, that's a good idea. Actually, before the meeting tonight, FEMA sent an update, we signed off on the project for the ratio. It looks like we're gonna get around ninety-eight thousand dollars from FEMA, and that's seventy percent, or seventy-five percent. I believe the state's supposed to pony up up to fifteen, so that leaves us with the remaining ten, so that's, that's a bit of good news. And I wanna thank Connie and Christina for all the help with the budget, it's obviously the end of the fiscal year, it's my first time through, I know Christine probably thinks I'm real nervous about it, because I ask all the time, but it's going very well, and both of their help has been really good, so I appreciate that. Shout out to Marcia, she went down to Lincoln Square, planted all the pots that were down there, cleaned that up, and it looks really, really nice, so she did a great job. And thanks to all the guys for their hard work, maintenance staff with the pool, getting everything going, I know they put in a lot of time, they put up the flags on the, for Memorial Day. And then also, I know Drake's been super busy now that it quit raining, hopefully he gets a little bit of a break. And last but not least, thank you to Jordan's Lawn Care, I don't know if any of you went over to the cemetery for Memorial Day, but that looked awesome. Kudos to them for, I think it helps, he lives right across the street, he's got a look at it right in the cool side of his driveway, and I haven't seen him, but I'm gonna personally reach out to him and tell him he did amazing, because it looks really good. How's it? Christina?
Backing up on that stuff, and then if anybody emails me in the next week, you'll get it on my response, because I will be on date.
Good for you.
Have fun.
Where are you going?
I'm going to Texas.
Good for you.
Visit some family, so I will be gone until next Friday.
Have fun, safe travels.
Thank you.
Meaning you're coming back on a Friday?
I am, I did the council pack it out, because you guys got me, so we have to come back on Friday.
Oh my gosh.
Dedication, dedication.
You know, I might be a little sick of the kids and husband by then, I was like, okay.
Council reports, Sarah.
Uh, I don't really have anything, um, nothing, I have, anything, yes, that's something most unapplied, I'm sure. So I'll have to say it at the very end and just make it last till we, till it.
Yeah.
Friends of the library is holding their annual plant sale in front of the library in conjunction with citywide garage sales, so it'll be Friday the eighteenth, eight to five, and on Saturday from nine to one. Also, the Wellness Coalition of Rural Lynn County is encouraging people to take part in a survey, which will cover six different communities, including ours, they're gonna use that information to try to get more grants, because the grant we have presently goes for another three years, I believe, but we gotta keep on the head to do the good things they, they work on. And thanks to all the staff, and Lincoln Square looks good, and compliments on that, and that's all I have.
Does that mean that citywide garage shelter this week?
I'll fill again.
It's fine, I'm told.
Yes, there will be an ad in the paper this week.
Could both of these next.
You wanna go somewhere?
Yes. Well, and Christine, if I can lock me in. I got an email that there are three council seats up.
Correct.
And the paperwork has to be in by.
August twenty-third, leaving it in?
So that's coming, I don't, who are the three besides myself, obviously, I'm.
Yourself, Nate, and Travis.
Okay, so this is a great opportunity for everybody who really wants to get up here and make a difference for the city, because I know there's at least one spot that's gonna be open, and people should get that paperwork in, you just need like twenty or twenty-five signatures from somebody in town, and then you submit your paperwork and make sure it's all filled out, it's here by, in time, because otherwise you can't.
I think you gotta take it up to the courthouse.
Oh, no.
It all, it is all done through the town.
Well, whatever, take it to the courthouse, it should all be signed up, because there's gonna be some seats open. Uh, and then second thing, I already touched on it, but the park is very, very, very busy, so please, 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 slow down, think about what you're doing when you're driving around the park, pay attention, there's a lot of little kids, a lot of mothers and fathers who have their hands full, and they, you know, they, it just, I don't wanna see something terrible happen, because it is so busy over there. But it's, it is great to see all the people there enjoying the splash pad, when I go by, sometimes they're literally waiting for it to open, there's, there's a line of people waiting to get in there before it opens in the morning, so I love that, you know, people are using it. I don't love the new lion, I, I just really liked the old one, but it's, you know, it is nice that it's there, but so.
Agreed.
It's just, you know.
You can find somebody who wants to.
If you could find somebody that wants to sponsor it, I mean, we can get like the old one back.
Yeah.
It'll be a five thousand dollar challenge, but.
Well, then it didn't work. I mean, it was not manufactured well, but it was a nice one. But anyways, so the lion's back and I, I've been seeing some pictures of the kids climbing on it and stuff and, um, and everybody's having a great time over there. And I do know that the city guys put a lot of time and effort into not only getting it together, but making sure that they test it every day so that it can get open and it can get closed. That is something that happens every day. And somebody is going over there at eight o'clock at night and closing that thing up. So I mean, it's, it's an ongoing effort, but it's a good, good piece of the town, so I'm happy about that. That's it.
Nathan?
I don't have anything that, I don't really knew, but Stephanie's right. I, with so many people in the park, so many cars parked there, kids just, you know, kind of running randomly. I am very nervous driving by that park. I know we got, I think we have twenty-five mile an hour speed limit across that park. I know it was debated at one time to drop it back to fifteen. I, I just, I know I drive super, super slow and super careful there, so police people do the same thing. And someday we should discuss dropping that limit again, maybe, I don't know. I think I was on the twenty-five mile an hour sided at the time, but not so much anymore. And then, yeah, just the other thing, um, good job to the city workers, like the town's looking great, the park's looking great. Thank you, Marcia, for planting the plants. That's wonderful. And that's it.
All right. Mayor's report. City cleanups the twenty-eighth.
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth. And that's probably gonna have like computers and stuff down here and everything else, but.
City shot.
Yeah. Tree stumps. Uh, we're gonna be getting rented stump grinder. We're open to two options to try and get the most we can done at one time. I think there's a hundred and eighty-five stumps that belong to us that need taken out, so. I'm hoping that either in the next week or the following week that we will have that here.
How much does it cost to rent the grinder?
It depends on which, which way we go.
How many man-hours do we think it's gonna take to grind a hundred and eighty-five stumps?
So the less money option is more time, the more money option is less time, but.
And how much would somebody charge to come in and do it? Because here's the thing, Brandon, we're getting a thousand dollars a tree. And all I'm saying is, is if somebody would come in here, if we said we have a hundred and eighty-five trees, if you wanna come in and do it and they would give us a decent price on that, it, even if it's a little more than what it would cost for us to do it ourselves, the time that it's gonna take, the guidance off of other projects, it might be worth it.
The one thing I, I told him to reach out to the guy, he doesn't have a quote yet, but they could do like several in a day versus fewer. They said it was more money, so, um, we're, I don't know a lot because we're trying to figure it all out yet, but, um, one thing I do know is that we have some trees on Jackson Street that need to come down and they're big ones. That's gonna, we're gonna have to pay and they're gonna be very pricey, so, um, yes, we have received quite a bit of money for those trees. We have more that need to come down also, so we'll, Travis and I'll kind of facilitate figuring out what, what works best and.
Why don't you contact somebody that can do all of it and try to do a contract for all of it? And see if you can get a better pricing to take down those pricier trees and the stump grinding. Does Si do grinding?
I believe so, yes.
So maybe, cause I mean, we do use him a lot. Maybe he could come in and give us a pack, even if he wasn't gonna do the work right this second as far as taking down the other trees, maybe he could put it all together in one package for us.
Tried looking into an option to buy him one, two downsides of that, one, you can't, you can't buy one. That's why we waited as long to get the grinder, because we're like next on the list to get it, so, um, for the rental. And then the other thing was, you know, after we get this done, it would just, you're not gonna use it a lot, you know, here and there, but it's really not worth, worth having it sit here maintaining it for the one or two trees, hopefully a year that you take down. So, um, we'll kind of look at all that, but I will, I will, we'll figure this out and just be looking.
Hey, um, we talked about the paint sprayer earlier. Does the old one still work, you know?
It does, but you're not gonna want it, like, you could do like the lines that are existing, but you're not gonna wanna do something new.
No, I'm just saying, cause I mean, we need to, I mean, we'd have, need to bid like next time and because we, obviously we're even probably happy for the first of August and you know, that's the weekend that.
Well, Travis and I actually talked about this today, so, and the money technically isn't there for till July, so. I told him, he's gonna be getting bids and I'm hoping that on the twenty-eighth we'll have a, uh, you guys can make a decision which one.
Any chance we could trade the old one in?
I think, I, we probably could, but you're, probably gotta charge them to take it. They'll charge you.
All right. Ditches, do you know what he's doing? Do ditches.
I mentioned that, um. We're gonna have to do it twice, so, um, I'm hoping as soon as he can get ahold of Farmer that they discuss doing it prior to me, but. Do you want it done right away?
Well, I, I mean, I just want it done before Cyber Capes.
Yeah. Cause we're talking about doing it now and then doing it again, right, like in October, the almond grass must grow, so then you're good for the winter.
And then also I came in and talked to Brandon, you know, we, you know, people about their yards and stuff. We got a drainage ditch or valley or whatever that's just gone wild and we had to come up with that. I talked, I, I mean, I said, give them a look into those goats to go, let them go in there and eat everything.
Well, that burners do that.
Not Cornell. Has it made a big difference? Can you tell?
They're showing things out.
So you're chasing goats? Is that what you're saying?
We are not. The Cornell campus safety is.
So, so, you know, it's on city property.
No, but I, I think they're doing pretty good. They're drawing as well attention and having visitors, so.
And I, you know, I thought, you know, maybe, you know, that's something if, I mean, just something to look at, see how much it's gonna cost, but I mean, it's, you know, you gotta, like a learning center right there and those kids are just joy going out there and watching goats ward around, a lot of kids out there in no box and. But we need to do something with it no matter what, I mean, it's out of hand. And I don't, I don't, I don't know, you know, we talk about burning it every year. I don't know if you wanna burn it now that you got a big learning center there and a bunch of people's apartments are there now. You know, that new building, so we have to figure out what to do with it.
I will say burning is gonna be a challenge because we've always burned it on a south wind, take the smoke north to the highway. Well, now you'd be taking it right into, to, to, well, with more houses there, plus you got the budget lined up building and apartments, so. Yeah, I don't know what the answer is. I think if it gets dry enough here, or dryer, um, maybe we can.
I can do it by itself.
Get down in there with the, with the use for the ditches, so.
Yeah, I mean, you can have, have them look at it, see if they can back down it or not, I mean, but. Maybe the city start buying goats and keep them in there, I don't know.
Drayton has some goats, don't you?
All right. That's all I got. You made it. Anything? I'm in.